Good evening. Welcome to the November 9th, 2020 Board of Education Meeting of Evanston Township High School. Governor Pitsker recently extended the disaster declaration related to COVID-19 pandemic for all Illinois counties and extending the ability of public bodies to hold virtual meetings to November 15th, 2020 in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yeah, yeah. Hi.
Hi Kathy.
Louday?
Here.
Livingston?
Here.
Monsell?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Rolowitz?
Here.
Teterich?
Here.
I did it. Good. Savage Williams?
Here. Thank you. Thank you Kathy. Nice to see you.
Thanks. Good to be here.
All right. The first item on the agenda is written communication. Dr. Beavis, do we have any written communication?
We have no written communication this evening.
All right then, the next item on the agenda is recognition of National Merit and National Achievement Scholars.
And board, we're joined by Beth Ari, our College and Career Counselor, who every year coordinates this wonderful recognition and we have some great recognition tonight. It's just going to be in a little different format than we usually do. So Beth, hi, good to see you. And we'll just turn this over to you so we can honor these wonderful scholars.
Excellent. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to say that the students and their families were invited to attend the viewing of the school board meeting, so hopefully we have some of them out there that will be hearing the recognition as they happen. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and college scholarships that began in 1955. United States high school students entered the National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, also known as the PSAT-NMSQT. This serves as the initial screen for over 1.5 million entrants each year. The mission of National Merit Scholarship Corporation is to recognize and honor the academically talented students of the United States. National Merit Scholarship Corporation accomplishes its mission by conducting nationwide academic scholarship programs. The enduring goals of National Merit Scholarship Corporation programs are, it's a lot of letters, a lot of words, sorry. Their goal is to promote a wider and deeper respect for learning in general and for exceptionally talented individuals in particular. To shine a spotlight on brilliant students and encourage the pursuit of academic excellence at all levels of education. And to stimulate increased support from individuals and organizations that wish to sponsor scholarships for outstanding scholastic talent. In early September, about 16,000 students, or approximately one-third of the 50,000 high scorers, are notified that they have qualified as semifinalists. To ensure that the academically talented young people from all parts of the United States are included in this talent pool, semifinalists are designated on a state representational basis. Semifinalists are the highest scoring entrance in each state. Qualifying scores vary from state to state and from year to year, but the scores of all semifinalists are extremely high. To be considered for a National Merit Scholarship, semifinalists must advance to finalist standing in the competition by meeting high academic standards. The semifinalists we are celebrating tonight include Zachary Bahar, Benjamin Barbaro, Celia Chambers, Ian Dunbar, Alexander Johnson, Madeline Rodriguez, Ezra Steinberg, and Anna Toffin. Congratulations to each of you and best of luck on the next leg of this competition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Beth.
Yes. I'm really hoping that they were able to be here or they heard their names. And you know, just one more thing that we're doing a little differently in this time, but we are still recognizing their achievements. So congratulations to all the students.
Are we going to figure out a way to send them their PIN?
Their little PIN, yes.
Because we always do that.
Yeah, we do.
I just wonder because, you know, so few perks.
So I was wondering about that and I can coordinate that with Dr. Witherspoon's office.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Beth. That's great. Okay. Fabulous. Thank you. All right. Okay, so moving along, the next item is items for information and the first item here is an update on e-learning.
Okay, and so tonight we have Dr. Levy and Dr. Beavis, who are going to give us an update on the e-learning and in particular with the survey that we recently completed and what we're learning from it. And Carrie, are you going to go first or Pete?
Thanks, Dr. Witherspoon. I'm going to intro it and Carrie, Carrie has been looking at this. It closed just this past week, so this data is about as fresh as it gets. Carrie will be presenting on the student and family results as well as the staff results. And we will be fielding questions between the two presentations. But you know, we've also used this survey already. Our department chairs have been digging into this survey, these preliminary results. What we don't have are the comments because there are literally hundreds, maybe even over a thousand comments. I don't want to overstate it. But analyzing those comments and looking for themes takes some time. But we wanted to start working with the quantitative data that we had right away. So it's hot off the presses. It's very fresh and I'm going to turn it over to Carrie and she will walk you through the presentation.
Great. Thank you. Do you want me to do the student and family one first? Does it matter which order?
I think the student and family one would be great to do first.
And yes, the open-ended free response items had over a thousand. The students was over 1,200 open-ended comments. So we're working through those. Okay, so let me set this up and then I can share my screen. Okay. Does that work?
Yep.
Okay. Awesome. It's nice to see everyone. It's nice to see you. Sorry. Let's see. All right. There we go. Okay, so my first couple of slides are just the demographic and I put in, since I'm presenting the opening of school, I put in the opening of school numbers just to give some context. So we had just over 1,580 students complete the survey, take the survey, and over 1,200 parent guardians. This is more students that took the survey than our return to school poll, but a little less on the parent guardian end. And so I just put in, just so we can see kind of the distribution by grade, pretty, pretty close. A little over for freshmen, a little under for sophomores, but it's close. And then I also, this is all based on our opening of school enrollment versus how all students and parenting, parent guardians self-identify, so there, it won't totally match up, but it's pretty close. I do have some survey results. We had the parent guardian survey that was available in Spanish, so I do need to incorporate those and get the comments translated. So there's a little bit more data to add for that on the parent guardian, but it's about 20, less than 30. So this is just to set up some demographics. And then on the parent guardian, we had a question for the parent guardians if they're student and parent guardians could have answered for more than one student. So we asked if the student who had an IRP or five or four, and so we see some pretty consistent representation in these survey results there too. And then all throughout, just to let you know, I have a no response. The first questions, it's fine, but after a while, there's quite a bit of no response, especially for students. So I'll just kind of mention that as I get a little closer. So, and I also put them together. We had several questions that were similar in both students. So, so we ask, given that we're currently in a pandemic overall, how satisfied are you with remote learning this fall? We asked the staff the same question. Parent guardians, it was a scale of zero to 100. Parent guardians average was 71% and students was lower at 60%. And when we see the staff on, the staff is higher. So here we are, almost all of the students answer this, but maybe like four. And now we get to a point where I have about, there's about 230 or so students that do not answer the rest of the questions. And I just pointed out to let you know that I left them in because they answered that first question unsatisfaction and I felt it was important to keep that data instead of just throwing it all out. So, so you're going to now see for the rest of it, about 232 students who then just dropped off and didn't answer the rest of the survey. So I just wanted to point out and acknowledge that. So we asked students, you know, think about your typical 70-minute class. On average, how much time do you spend on live instruction? And for the most part, they're saying about more than half, half, more than half, a quarter, say the entire 70-minute period.
Ask a question, Carrie, just a question about this slide. When we say live instruction, we mean any type of live instruction, not just necessarily lecturing, right?
Right. Correct. And then, so we asked both students and parent guardians, on average, how much time, you know, for students do you spend on homework or parents, do you, you know, perceive that your students spend on homework, unfinished assignments or other projects each week? So this is about around, over a course of a week, not a day. And so they're pretty close, you know, one to three hours is pretty close, three to five, a little over a quarter is for the bulk of it. So really between one to five hours is where most of the responses are falling. And so, and some parents a little proportionally say more than five than students. And then, but then there's also the parents had more of it, don't, a little bit more of it don't know, which is not surprising. Okay. And then we also asked them what the students-
I'm sorry, Carrie, could you just go back to that? Maybe this one, because this is the first time we're seeing it, so it's a lot of data on the screen and we need a little digestion time here.
Sure. I'll go a little slower and leave it for you.
Yeah, and I'm not, you know, I think just relatedly to me digesting this, I'm thinking I can see why some people stopped answering the questions because it's really hard to do these kinds of guestimates on time, you know, broken into kind of all these different segments. It's, you know, I can totally appreciate, I've abandoned surveys probably around the same point before.
Okay, do you want me to leave this one up a little bit?
No, no, I don't want to keep, delay us too much. I just, it just went fast. Thank you. Thank you.
No problem. So we asked students what they use asynchronous time on Mondays for, and we asked the parent guardians the same question. What does your student use the time for? And again, they're pretty fairly closely aligned, completing the Monday, the assigned work for Monday or other homework or other work projects not assigned on Monday. That's where both of the responses were. I have, I think this one, I'm going to let you look at this for a minute. I'm pretty sure this one has two, the list of all of their options will fall over to the next slide. So counseling lessons, social work, individual group therapy, some executive functioning. And then I'm going to go to the next slide. That's part of this question also. And they also spend, so about 13% or so post-secondary planning. A third of the students would say they participate in extracurricular activities. The parents that responded this, that was a little less for the parents that responded this on behalf of their students. Work, helping with family responsibilities, that one's different. And that may be, it's not like very clear, so students may have their own perception of what they do for family responsibilities and the parents would be like, yeah, they didn't take the trash out. I mean, I don't really, that one, it's kind of a little different. And then connecting with friends and family, so.
So I assume they were able to check all that?
Check all of that. You're right.
Yes. Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
I have to say, it is interesting to see the difference between student and parents. Clearly, parents have some ideas about what their student is doing that really does not, not quite line up. I mean, it's not like it's, you know, I think that that seems normal, probably.
Yeah.
And, you know. But on the other hand, with respect to sort of counseling and social work and support, where parents seem to think they're getting, they're spending time doing things, those things more, more than the students say that they're actually doing them. That, you know, that is, I think, notable and something to look into a little more deeply.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I also think some of this could be that there are different, the parent and guardians are not necessarily of the students who were, you know, there's not necessarily complete overlap.
Thank you.
Totally true. Right, right.
It could be just two completely different.
Right.
Okay. I'm going to move along. So we asked students how they feel about the work assigned during asynchronous time. And so over half strongly agree, agree to strongly agree that it contributes to the understanding of the concepts. And about two-thirds say it's relevant to their class discussions. A little less than half reported that they thought the assignments were clearly explained or that they were given adequate time to complete the work. And so about a quarter of those two on the bottom are in the near agree or disagree and those had a little higher proportion in the disagree category. Okay. And then, so we asked students a question about their camera on during class. How long do you typically have it on? And it's, you know, spread across these responses. Almost 30% just say a few minutes, not at all. And then a little less than a quarter say about half the class period. You know, 18% said the entire class period. We do have two follow-up questions to this one that are open-ended and that's the one where I have about 1,200. We asked them what, you know, why do you turn your camera on? I forget exactly how I phrased it, but you know, what encourages you to turn your camera on and why do you not turn it on? And so we got a lot of responses, so we're working through those. And I'm looking to, for some like, kind of something like this, they give you some of the big themes that we get out of all the open-ended data. Okay. And then, so we have a few questions about support. So we asked the students, how important is the feedback you get from teachers on the following? And as I look at this, I see, so I'm going to start with assignments here. So about two-thirds, 65% feel that's very important for assignments and about 60% felt that it was very important to get feedback for work submitted and overall progress. When you look at class participation, it's really more around, a little under a half, 40% felt that that was somewhat important. So really they felt like assignments, work submitted, overall progress were very important for them to get feedback, class participation a little less important. Okay. If my wait time's not long enough, just let me know.
Okay, you're good.
Okay. And then we asked parent guardians, like what are some of the ways that they're supporting their students during remote learning too, knowing that, you know, we're all community, all in this. So parents are reporting that they discuss the studies with their, how their studies are going, how the students feeling, they're encouraging them. Half of them are helping the student plan and organize. They're helping the student understand specific, you know, assignments. About a third, a little under a half, are helping the student find information or share their own knowledge.
So you didn't include the question that says, do you sit next to your student while they're in class? Because apparently that's a thing that's happening and I sort of hope it's not happening for our high school students at ETHS, but, but there has been some news about that.
Did I have a specific question about that?
Thank you. I do, hopefully that's because we didn't feel the need.
Okay. And then area, so we asked both the students and then the parent guardians, where does the student need the most help at this time? And so, I'm sorry, I meant to sort this in order by students. But the top area was motivation. Students, you know, 58, almost 59% are saying they need the most help in motivation. Parent guardians also. And then students followed by executive functioning skills. That's also, looks like the second rated for parent guardians too. About a third are saying self-care, well-being. And then slightly higher, I'm going to skip down here, exercise, physical activities. 43% of parent guardians felt that, but then only 20% of the students reported needing extra help with the exercise, physical activity. And then after that's academic course content and tutoring. So that was lower than everything else. Excuse me. Okay. And then I think, or yes, our self-care well-being. So we have in this, the next two slides, it's a list of resources that we asked them about or for the students. And then I have a couple of slides for the parents. We have a similar question for staff also, asking if they've accessed these following self-care, well-being resources. And so majority, like two-thirds or more say not at all. We do see that for students, the meditation and mindfulness videos are more reported, to be more likely to have access, either with, you know, on their own or with their teachers as part of a class. I mean, there's a third that are, you know, as I go down, that are accessing it, but there's a greater portion that are saying not at all. So the meditation, mindfulness videos, and then maybe acknowledged care tell. These are our resources. And then I have, I'll give you a moment and then I'll go to the next slide with the additional resources for students. Okay. And then the additional ones for students included the study centers. We do have a little less than half who are talking to their counselor, social worker, psychologist. And then here we are, we've gone up to about 70 to 75% that are not accessing the live learning guides, the ideas from the self-care guide for students or the family talk series. When I show you the parents, more of the parent guardians have accessed the family talk series. And then for the parent guardians, similar, again, a larger portion actually than the students have not accessed the ETHS website, acknowledged care tell, the meditation, mindfulness videos, the calming room. And then most likely about a third counselor, social worker, or psychologist. So students are accessing resources a little bit more than the parent guardians.
One of the reasons to have a question like that on the survey though, for both the students and the parents and guardians is to maybe even initiate conversation around those resources, right, Carrie?
Correct. Okay. And then the last question we asked them was the amount of emails from the ETHS community. Actually, the questions are specific from ETHS Communications Office. So 70% of parents and guardians are saying just enough. A little under half of the students are saying just enough. And about 28% are saying too many. We did say specifically ETHS Communications Office and hoped that they wouldn't confuse it with other emails that are coming from teachers and whatnot, but. So this one's the, that's the end of the, oh, no, I lied. One more. We asked students if they had any textbooks or library books to return. And so while most of them are saying they do not, we have 117 that are saying they don't know how to return them. Another 27 that don't have transportation, a portion that have lost them. And we do have, in those other responses we're looking through, and there's many responses in there where they, they do, there's some, just some other reason that they typed in. So these are the, pretty sure, yes, last questions for the student and parent guardian. Any questions before I slip over to the staff?
Do we have some sort of large number of unreturned books? Is that why we did this question?
Yes. We had a large number earlier in the semester of unreturned textbooks. But those, we really were able to really cut into that, so. But it's always good to get whatever textbooks are out there back. So this was a nice way of saying, hey, you know those phone calls and those emails we've sent? This is yet another way to follow up. So, yep.
Somebody goes, that was a large number when we started developing the survey and we were getting ready to put it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
You could have scared people off though with the question, like we're coming for the books and then they're like, okay, I'm not, I'm not doing this survey. I don't know.
It was at the very end. Okay. Do you have any, do you have questions or do you want me to switch over to the staff?
Any questions from the board? All right, Carrie, keep going.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
I guess, I guess I'm wondering, I'd like, is it possible, I know you're still processing the data, but is it possible to get some sense of what it was you guys were trying to find out? And how you, I mean, were there any big surprises? Were there any kind of aha moments from this? And how do you plan to put this information into practice or use it in some way?
Sure. Yeah. One of the things we're, we vetted this survey before it went out with, with teaching staff, with department heads, like the administrators. What we're looking for is information that we could actually utilize and turn around fairly quickly. We were very interested in the workload. We were also very interested in the supports. We're going to spend some additional time in increasing and working on accessing the academic and social emotional supports. And we also were looking at alignment, whether, whether, you know, do students value feedback as much as teachers in this environment? Do students report that their workload is consistent with what teachers are reporting? So you'll see in the second set of slides, we would look at where those alignments are where we want them. If there's a need to increase that alignment or to recalibrate it, we'll then strategize. So that's why last Friday, I had the chairs working on this in breakout groups going through and they were really focused in on those academic and social emotional supports and really seeing what we could do as an institution to increase the utilization of those. So that's, that's just one example right now of what we were able to do in a short period of time.
Yeah, I would think that that would be extremely important, given where we are remote and COVID and that really is kind of like the key.
You know, I was wondering if the question or the response to the question, family responsibilities, has anything to do with older siblings helping, helping their younger siblings? And how students see it and how parents see it, right? So that's, when I saw that, that's what I thought immediately. So that just came to my mind.
Yeah, and just to highlight that, Monique, that's exactly the kind of places we look to see a difference and then we could explore that further, but yeah, that's a good point.
Okay.
Okay, Carrie, I think we should transition to the staff and teacher survey. It'd be a good.
Sorry.
It's okay.
All right. All right, let me, um, I think I accidentally clicked stop share, it got in my way. Let's try this one again. Okay, staff. Um, there we go. So we have three hundred staff take the survey, two hundred and fifteen who identified as teaching staff. So there's a series of questions in the middle that were very specific to teaching staff about in the classroom. Um, and some questions that they're getting in the very end that are more for um all staff. So the staff got asked the same question, the overall satisfaction question. Remember, the parents were seventy-one percent, students were sixty percent, and staff are saying overall their um average is seventy-seven percent satisfaction. And then, so the next several slides are for the questions that were very specific to teaching staff. Anyone who identifies non-staff, non-teaching was skipped over. So we asked staff a similar question as the students, thinking about the typical seventy-minute class, how much time is spent on live question, on live instruction? And their responses are pretty similar to the student responses. Um, really about the, about half or more than half is where the bulk of the responses are, came in. Okay, and then we asked um staff, to what extent do they incorporate the following social emotional learning competencies into their instruction or asynchronous assignments? Demonstrating decision-making skills, um, using social awareness and interpersonal skills to establish and maintain positive relationships and developing self-awareness and self-management skills. Um, and so most of these responses are in a great extent, to some extent, um, categories.
And I just, I care that that's encouraging, given that that was a real focus over the summer to get that uh in, integrated into the online uh remote learning environment. Uh, it's something that teachers expressed um a need for, how do we do this in the online environment? So to see those numbers is, is, is encouraging at this point.
And then we asked, um, how frequently do they give individual feedback to students? So we asked students what, you know, what type of feedback is important, but here we ask the um teachers, the teaching staff, how frequently, and for the most part, it's weekly, whether it's, you know, once a week or more than once a week or daily. Uh, the bulk of the responses, that sixty, seventy, eight, almost seventy-nine percent are saying at some point uh during the week.
It would have been nice to hear from the students about how often they get individual feedback to see how that meshes with this.
Yeah, yes, you know, I, we started on the student survey first and realized that that question didn't fit for staff, so then we asked about frequency, but now we're just practically looking at it, you're right, that would be a good question, so next time, I'll, I'll.
You know, I think you're, you're asking the teachers to say, you know, are you doing something that would be a good idea for you to be doing? And I think, um, you know, the inclination might be to say, oh, well, of course I do that thing that I should be doing. Um, whereas I think you, you might get a more accurate idea of whether it's happening i- if we ask our students. And I'm not saying either version of self-reporting is going to be, you know, can be taken a hundred percent at face value, but I, I think it's important to know this really from the student perspective.
No, that's a great point. There's a lot of the questions we asked across the surveys to see how they lined up. So that is definitely one, thank you, that next time I would definitely ask to see how they, you know, lined up together. Okay. Um, and then we asked, uh, teaching staff, how days, um, what they mostly do during asynchronous time on Mondays? And a bulk of their time is grading student work, um, planning lessons, meeting with other teachers, kind of a great extent, to some extent. And then we see sort of in the some extent, a little extent, meeting with students, um, meeting with other staff, and then the self-care well-being. I moved my cursor and I think it's, sorry. All right, sorry about that, hold on, okay, there we go. And then ed tech was on the um, the last one we asked them. So about a third, to some extent, are spending some time with technology or ed tech resource we have. Okay. And then I just have a couple more slides for the staff. This one, where we get to the self-care well-being, these are resources, well-being resources available to staff. Um, and so now all staff that took the survey were to answer this. Um, so we see a little bit more that use the ETS website than was reported in the students or the parent guardians. Um, not so much in the call for calm support line. Um, but we do see about half that use acknowledged care tell, tell, um, a little less than half uh using the meditation mindfulness videos. Um, and not, as many as seventy percent are reporting not using the calming room. Um, the fitness and wellness classes, and about sixty percent report not using Rebel Human Mindfulness. And then the last, I think it's last one, yes, same question, we asked them about the now, uh, emails they receive from the ETS communications office. And uh, two-thirds are reporting just enough. More reported too few than too many, I thought that was interesting, but um, that's it, pretty sure, yes, for staff. So any other questions for the staff?
Yeah, I have a question, um, it's a little bit less about the survey as much, but more about alignment. So for example, on the um slide that early in the staff section, you talked about um, um, teachers being honest about not, either not very often or not at all using SEL supports in the classroom. And it was, admittedly, it was a smaller number than those that did. And I was wondering if, and, and at this point, it's the back of the envelope math probably, but you think that that aligns with kind of the numbers of teachers you're seeing come to their department chairs or come to the uh counseling office or social workers and ask for help with that? You know what I'm saying, like, or, or some people maybe being honest, like, I'm not really doing it, but similarly are seeking help in doing it. Does that make sense?
Um, I don't know, Pete, if you want, I mean, I, I do think sometimes that no response is an indicator too. If you skip a question, um, but he can.
Yeah, I, I mean, the short answer is I don't, we don't know because of, it's, it's, it's not at that level where we'd be able to track that back. It's not by, you know, um, it's not, it's not correlated like that, um, but it is.
I'm sure it wouldn't be numbers. Well, I guess I'm just trying to get a general sense. Are you getting teachers coming for extra support in that area? I mean, some are being honest that they need this, the help, it sounds like. And then are you getting people asking for that kind of help? I know they're not going to be, you know, numerically lined up or anything.
Uh, yeah, we're getting people who are asking for help and support. And if you go to the slide um after that, Carrie, just a couple, go ahead, one more. Go ahead, one more. Go ahead, one more. Here we go, back one. Yeah, there we go, okay. So, you know, this really kind of outlines what this doesn't tell is if, if, if each of those are unique, right? I mean, if those are unique, that's kind of interesting that teachers spread out and did different things. I think having them and offering those supports are critical, um, the extent to which they're accessed. Uh, of course, we want them accessed, but even if, even if they're going on their own, uh, to one of those uh at, when it's needed during the semester, I think is, is, is critical. Um, but we could also look at, if we wanted to, the, we probably have data on because their websites and their clicks for the most part, we could probably figure out how often those are utilized.
Yeah, and I think that's really important. I guess what I was wondering is if they're not using supports with the kids. I think that was the early slide, that they were integrate, because you talked about how you spent a lot of time on that over the summer and a lot of people learned from that ex- summer experience how to do it and seem to be doing it in real time, which is great. And I gue- I guess I'm just wondering if that's still, if people are still seeking help in that area, because it is diff- this is a big area that's different, I mean, lots of things are different about remote, but it feels like that's a big one, right? They're trying to teach while they're trying to watch kids in a different way for signs of concern.
Yes, I, I, I think that, um, I know people are asking their department chairs and doing those in departmental meetings. Uh, they're sharing time in every department meeting where people can share best practices and connecting with students. Uh, so, with the social emotional learning standards is, is part of that discussion for sure. So it's not done, no way. It, it's such a new and such a learning environment, uh, that our teachers have really embraced that learning component. Our administrators have embraced it, um, there's really, it's critical to be adaptable at these times. And asking for help is part of the, the, um, you know, being vulnerable and asking for help in a place that is typically, our faculty is very much uh perfectionists. And I say that as a perfectionist, uh, but being able to be vulnerable and ask for help and support builds community. We've had our leaders do that. We have our, our department leaders and our teachers are doing that too, so yes.
Thanks, Pete.
I have a question, it kind of a follow-up. Um, Pete, do you envision um the possibility of SEL being embedded, more embedded into the curriculum? So it's not, it is, it's not like in, you know, just an extra support and resource, but it's actually embedded in class time and in the curriculum?
Yeah, yes, dude, that, yeah, exactly. And that's, if we go back to those slides, that's, that's where that was going. Um, we've done work over the, over the summer on this. We've, we've always had intentions of bringing it in. Um, I do think that being able to bring this in to your instruction and assignments in an, in, in the environment we're in, right? Really pushed people, you know, you might have been in the, in the, in the olden days, you might have been like, well, you know, I do some of that, but really I have a lot of content and I have to get through this and all, you know. But what we've found is that by doing this, all the other things happen easier. When you build a community and you really spend time on decision-making, responsible behaviors, social emotional awareness, all those things uh cues, and if you can do that in a Zoom environment or a Google meets environment, when we come back to uh and return to uh in-person instruction and an in-person curriculum, um, I have every expectation that this is going to pay huge dividends in terms of integrating SEL into the curriculum, dude. Um, intentionally, just like we did this summer, it'll be, it'll, it'll, because we're seeing how valuable that is firsthand.
Thanks, Pete.
You got it.
One of those, um, one of the many changes that will stay after this is all over. It will be. We learn. Okay. Other questions? Hearing none.
Um, I guess I, I have one, I'm, I'm still, um, I would love to um hear more about this um, in the next, maybe at the next board meeting about findings and drilling down a little deeper. Because, I mean, I guess, I mean, I, I think it's good to kind of get a general temperature on satisfaction. But I'm kind of curious to know if there's a way without creating survey fatigue, um, what, what's really what, what's really, what satisfaction is really about, like what one person considers satisfaction, another, you know, I'm satisfied is very, very general. And has a lot to do with a lot of these things that you're already drilling down to, you know, the social, emotional and the academic and, you know, the feedback and other things. But I'd, I'd just be really interested if you had more time to go through the data, because I know you said you didn't have a lot of time process a lot of this, but with the comments and some of the feedback that you're getting in the written answers, it would be really, really interesting, I think, to hear more about that and um, and to find out what you're planning to, how you're planning to act on some of that information. So a temperature check is really good. I'd love to, to just hear more about how it's shifting your course or how it's not shifting or how it's helping you evolve your you know, what's being done and how teachers are using this information too, potentially.
I agree, we could, we could probably turn around that around uh by the neck. We can do that, right, Carrie, get the an- analysis on the thematic analysis, I think was what we're talking about, and then how we're utilizing that?
Kind of looking really quickly, so for example, at the end of the staff, um, we asked them about aspects, you know, things that are going well. Um, suggestions from schools can support, so we have in all the surveys, a couple of open-ended questions like that, and that's what we're digging into, looking for some broader themes to help, um, some more qualitative data to share, so. I'll have that for, um, hopefully by the next time you're meet, for sure, um, in the next couple of weeks, we should have been able to go through all of that.
Great.
That'll be good, yeah, just kind of see what what conclusions you will come to. Um, I'm not really, I'm not really interested in looking at item by item, because I know that that can get really tedious. But you know, just what are you, like you said, themes? What, what can you pull from this data?
It's going to be most useful to be, um, is that this survey really is going to help teachers, department chairs uh, make adjustments to their instruction. That's where I really think the, the, the real value of this comes in. And, and that's what Pete and Carrie have already started with the department chairs. And there'll be uh the time spent in departments doing it. And, and really, you know, I'm very interested in it myself, but, but I really don't think I, I think the real value is going to be with the teachers. And, 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 and them getting a better idea of uh what we can be doing to just uh, make more improvements, to, to just uh, uh, address some of the things that, uh, that popped up.
All right. So are we ready to move into the opening of school report? Okay. All right.
Uh, so Carrie and I will just continue uh with our, with our set here. We're gonna do the uh opening of school report next. Uh, this is an annual report that goes to the board. Uh, and Carrie uh has created a, a very brief slide deck uh that uh highlights uh aspects of the report. But uh, once we get, once we do that slide deck, we are open, uh, we'll be open to any questions. And then we'll move on to the report on student achievement and talk briefly about the uh truncated school report card.
All right, so. Okay, slide deck number three. Um, opening of school, okay, so I think I need to, because I don't have all of my hard copies of the report with me or my office, I want to say, I've been saying like for the last thirty-something years, but I think we're now at the thirty-five years that school enrollment is up from the prior year. So this year, total school enrollment, thirty-seven, twenty-nine, that's the official enrollment as of September thirtieth. So we have, and then when I look at our enrollment, um, there, there's a, it's table and report, but when I pull out and look at our African-American, black enrollment, our Hispanic, Latinx enrollment and our white enrollment, which are the largest of the which are the largest of the three uh subgroups I've, you know, looking at the trends just over the last five years. So here's the portion, proportion is on a line, and then I put the total N down here underneath each school year. So you can just see how that's changing, not only by proportion, but um by total size of each group. So we see a slight trend down in our African-American, black enrollment, a trend up and has been going up even before these five years for our, our Latinx population. And then our white enrollment's been fairly steady over the last five years, a little bit up from from five years ago, but for the last four years, pretty consistent. And then our social ed moment. So this year is the first year that we've included building five, the day school, they were not included in enrollment as of September thirtieth last year. So they represented additional um that, that bump up. I, without that, it would have been like four fourteen, four hundred and fourteen. So that extra um group is rep, is um from our day school, building five in social ed, and then our bilingual program enrollments are um down again for this year. And I think that's it. Those are like the main highlights from the opening of school. If there's anything else, um any other questions, let me know. Always my shortest and sweetest report.
Carrie, I have a question. What defines enrollment? Like, are those kids that are actually walking into our building? Or are those kids um could be our students, but could be at some alternatives placement?
So it's a, it's a as of September thirtieth, students who are officially enrolled. But the total enrollment is building one, the main campus, building five, and then the off-campus, if there's an off-campus or state school that are considered, I, you know, we are the home school. So that is our whole, our total population. I do, and I forget if it's like the first few pages does break down a group pulls out what's um the number of students disaggregated by off-campus, state school, but the total enrollment is our total population of students that were um, oh, they're homeschool.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's just interesting that um our enrollment has stayed the same or gone up um despite all of this um remote. So that's just a, a note. It's a statement, not a question. Alright. Report number three, student achievement. You're on a roll, Carrie.
Alright, Pete's gonna kick this one off.
Alright.
Okay. Um, here, let me just fix this here. Okay, good. Um, so you know, we're doing our uh annual uh achievement report. Um, it's a little bit strange this year. Uh, some of the data is incomplete. We do have a cohort though uh of seniors who graduated, and that's what we're reporting on for the most part. Uh, we won't be reporting on the juniors um because we don't have any test data on them that we would typically put in the appendices. But this year more than ever before, I just want us to be clear that that um this is a, uh, this is a report. It's a, it's a, it's a data report. It's a map uh of what uh, what that senior class uh experienced. Uh, it's not the current experience at E T H S because this is the group of students who uh had one uh quarter, uh if that really, as seniors of uh remote learning. Uh, but had a, had a uh consistent in-school experience. Uh, I just want to keep that in mind. Uh, and with the final caveat that next year's achievement report with the current seniors will look even will look different as well. Um, because we won't have necessarily uh S A T or A C T data on the graduating seniors. So with that in mind, uh, this is a more granular report than the uh, than the school report card. Uh, these academic indicators that are in here, when we look at English uh Language Arts, E L A. Um, you know, we're looking, uh, you know, to be, uh, they look at, are you, do you have a G P of two point eight overall? Do you have ninety-five pretend attendance in high school in your junior and senior year? Uh, do you have at least one English Language Arts academic indicator? And at least one mathematics academic indicator. And when I've talked about this in the past, it is a whole lot easier to get the math indicator than the English Language Arts indicator by virtue of how they set this up. Go ahead, Carrie. So the English Language Arts Academic Indicator, you have to attain one of the following. You have to get an A, B, or C in an English A P course. That means you have to enroll in a junior advanced placement or a senior advanced placement English course. Uh, we only offer junior A P and senior A P. That's all that's available. And you have to get an A, B, or C in that class, or take that A P exam and get a score of three or higher. Uh, our students who take those A P courses overwhelmingly get scores of three or higher. We don't have students who don't take those courses who take A P exams in English. So that's irrelevant. Uh, and then reading and writing S A T subject score four eighty or higher, which is the uh benchmark that the state set for the S A T. Uh, this is a significantly higher bar due to that A P requirement uh than uh the bar you're going to see for mathematics. Go ahead, Carrie. So our math indicators, uh, you must take two algebra and earn an A, B, or C. All of our students as part of their graduation requirement, take uh, you know, they take two algebra as part of their math sequence. Uh, so it's, it's not a question of enrolling in an A P course. It's a question of taking a core mathematics course. Uh, you can also take uh A P math course and get an A, B, or C. Most of the students, all of the students who take A P math courses got an A, B, or C in two algebra. So that's redundant. Your math A P exam score three or higher, again, uh, is redundant. And your math sub is score five thirty or higher is another way to get this. But essentially, the uh, the alpha indicator here, the one that controls the entire set for mathematics academic indicator is your two algebra, A, B, or C.
Okay. So the report consistent with um the past few years, you look at a four-year cohort. So this report is the um class of, I have a typo here, I apologize. I'll fix it. It's actually the class of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty. I think I got ahead of myself with twenty twenty-one. So it's twenty eighteen, class of twenty nineteen, and the twenty twenties, the, the cohort that I'm reporting on for the first time that just graduated. Um, and this is all students that are co-horted who graduated in four years and those who have not graduated yet. Um, the report is disaggregated by race and gender. We have male status, I E P placement, like Pete said, it's more granular than what's found in the Illinois report card. Most of the indicators kind of align with how it's be playing, you know, reports college readiness, except for the one is attendance rate. We report attendance rate across four years of high school um as a plan. And in the report card, they're gonna look at, uh, they look at junior and senior year. So this is just our um cohort, our, just our total N of students across each of the subgroups. Uh, we have a couple of subgroups that are too small to report. They're under twenty, so they're under twenty students in that subgroup. So that's why um like two or more races is not included. Um, American, Indian, Native. Um, but otherwise, this is, you can see our total sample si- our total size for class of twenty twenty is eight hundred and thirty-eight. Similar um to prior. So the highlights here, which is what I'm about to walk through in the rest of the slides, um, I can just give you a minute to look at this. Um, but this is all of my follow-up slides kind of go with these bullet points. Um, so I'll go to the first one, actually. So the, the G P A here, this is the mean unweighted G P A. And so the mean overall here, the first um bar for all is three point one. That's up. And that's higher from the prior to actually three cohorts. Um, and, and shifting of that macro measure, um, I think is a little harder. So that one's up and it's up across subgroups, um, I believe. And then the percent of students who earned a two point eight or higher is also up. So overall, it was seventy-two percent of the cohort, class of twenty twenty that earned, has a two point eight or higher G P A compared to like sixty-five percent from the class of twenty nineteen and also sixty-five percent from the class of twenty eighteen. So the G P A is up. I think that was a, a good highlight. And then our attendance rate, so the mean attendance rate is across four years. Um, here, that, that bar is that benchmark of ninety-five percent attendance. Now, remember, we're reporting across four years. And it's an a- annual, an average daily attendance. That's what's on the report card. I do, we do know that when we looked at the data, when we looked at the report card data in the year, let me know for last year, that a lot of students, we had a high um higher um absence rate in March to June, much higher than we did from the first seven months of the year. So that definitely is impacted in these numbers. Um, and attendance during COVID, when we were sheltered in place, was um taking, can take in a variety of ways. Districts could, could do their attendance by a variety, a variety of ways. We did ours in a kind of a more conservative way. We required students to, you know, fill out a form for their attendance. We asked them about a measure of how their wellbeing is for that day. So um, just, just to kind of keep an eye and just keep in mind that there, that is playing into these figures. But um, yeah, I had another point I was gonna make, but I lost when that point was. But this was, oh, um, this ninety-two attendance is uh overall is the same as the prior year, the prior cohort. If my, yes, the mean attendance rate for the class of twenty-nine was ninety-two percent. And this class of twenty twenty, which is also impacted by COVID, is also ninety-two percent. So I just thought that was something to, to left a little bit. And then across all these, we have everything disaggregated by uh race and gender. Okay. Um, and then as Pete talked about the, the benchmark, so this is just the percent meaning at least one of those benchmarks that Pete talked about. This is the English Language Art Benchmark that um Pete was highlighting. The English, the A P course can A, B, or C, or earning exams score three or higher, or an S A T reading and writing score of four eighty. And then in math, um, it's the same, but this one includes uh taking and getting an A, B, or C in two algebra. And this is a percent meaning this is similar to the class of twenty nineteen. And so we, um, we had some measures that are in goal two, district goal two, student wellbeing. One of them was the percentage cohort. We looked at zero to four referrals across all four years of high school. So that's average of one referral a year. And from the class of twenty seventeen to the class of twenty twenty, we see a shift up in eighty-five percent of the students from the class of twenty twenty had zero to four referrals across all four years. Um, and I saw that, that increase across all of our subgroups as reported in the um, in the report. And then another one we asked.
Carrie, do we know what the percentage who just get zero is?
Who just get, I, no, I would have to go, I mean, I could go back and figure that out.
Just wondering.
Yeah. Um, and then when we asked about, oh, we not asked, sorry, still talking like it was a survey. My apologies. When we looked at data from those that participated in one or more extracurricular activity, that, as you can see, has been uh ticking up nicely over the last four years. And so the class of twenty twenty had eighty-one percent of that cohort participated in at least one extracurricular activity. These are in their junior or senior year. Um, and that, but that's an increase over the prior cohorts too. And we see that across almost all of the subgroups. And then, so graduation, I um kind of rethought how presenting graduation. Normally I give you two tables, one big like bar graph of four year and one of five year. And it just makes more sense to look at it this way. So here's four cohorts together. The blue bars represent four year, and then the little orange is the, the five year. So what I have in parentheses, so for example, class of twenty nineteen, ninety-four percent have a five-year graduation rate. That's ninety-two percent over four year, an additional two percent per five year. So now you can look at this across the four, these four cohorts and kind of compare their four-year graduation rates. And then also see the increase after five year. So that's for overall. And then this one is by um rate, race, ethnicity. So we have our black, African-American students, Latinx, and white students. Um, so again, class twenty twenty, they've just graduated the four years. And so you can see that, and then you can kind of compare the four and five year across the cohorts. It just made more sense to do it this way since we're looking, as we're keeping more students, as we know, we have five year and six year to kind of give a bigger picture of how they're doing over time and try, instead of trying to do the math in your head. And then uh we also have our free reduced students eligible for free reduced lunch, which we see therefore year is up. Students um within I E P, class of twenty twenty, their four-year cohort is up. And our English language, um, English learner students, their four years been up for the past two cohorts. And that might be my last, yes, slide for just some highlights from the report. Any questions?
These are very, very important, interesting. I've been combing through this data all weekend. So I really appreciate you putting it together. What it always tells me, of course, is that our black, African-American males continue to be the, our lowest group. We can see some progress and some improvement. But we still have work to do.
In some areas, I see also our, our Latino males and some of these Latino males, their data is a little below black males too.
Yeah.
It's a new um, new data point that you're trying to.
And it's not just below, it's been, it's decreased, I think, from previous year. Sort of notably, I thought.
I was just um, in looking at these numbers, just, I mean, it's hard to determine, I guess, which cause, but um, like which comes first, chicken or the egg? Because I noticed that the, 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 the group of students performing um the lowest academic achievement, they, they also are the students that have the lowest rate of attendance and the lowest rate of being involved in the school community. Um, so that would be the uh, the black and the Latinx young men. And I, it's a, it's a, it's a problem. I mean, you know, so it's not an easy problem to solve, but I, I just, I'm just curious to um to know what some of your, you know, your thoughts um are on that. But yeah, students who are, who have lowest rate of attendance and the lowest rate of participating in the school community are performing, performing the lowest academically. Not sure which is being caused by with is it? There's no sense of belonging for these young men in the school and that causes the poor attendance. And that causes them to feel like, to not have a sense of belonging, so they don't participate. Or is their lack of participation in attendance causing the low academic achievement?
It definitely looks correlated, Jude. There's no doubt about that. Whether or not it's causal or symptomatic, I don't know. Um, but this is a, a trend that's not, uh, hasn't gone away. Um, it's something that we uh, we, we work diligently on and we're gonna continue to. Um, I, my, my concern is that, you know, um, involvement's gonna look really different next year than it did. Um, I, my, my concern is that, you know, um, involvement's gonna look really different next year than it did for this senior class, right? Uh, this senior class was able to be involved in in-person activities to do a full, um, complement of things. All the opportunities were there. Perhaps in an online environment, maybe more students will participate in things virtually. I don't know. I don't know how, um, that sense of connectedness, uh, will play out, right? And that sense of school identity and identifying as a ETHS student, particularly among our freshmen, is something we've really been working on. But, um, you know, we'll continue to do that and, and, you know, Latinx males are on everybody's radar too. Um, I go to, um, student service meetings, I meet with our department chairs. And this is, uh, w- we've been strategizing and, and. Working on that, um, consistently. And that goes to the engagement piece, that goes to the, you know, are you engaging extracurriculars? It goes to your attendance, uh, piece, uh, certainly. Yeah, but I don't know if it's like to your point though, is it, is it chicken, is it egg, is it causal? Is it the locus of, of, of situation? Is it, is it a composite of, of everything? You know, a- and the numbers, you know, when you, you know, the, the old, like, if we compare this nationally, you'll see better numbers in Evanston. Of course you will, but, but our students deserve and our kids and families, um, certainly deserve better than what they currently have. They, they deserve better, they deserve better, they deserve to see, uh, a, a distribution in this data that's representative of the community across the board. Uh, and that's what we strive for.
And Pete, I, I think that's it for me. Um, it's frustrating. Because I know that Evanston Township High School is one piece of the puzzle. And you know, for as long as I've been on this board, I've talked about, um, the community approach. Or another process, or you know, something that is going to, um. Be as, as bold and innovative as it needs to be to help our black and brown boys. And, and so that is what frustrates me, um. Because we, you know, we know it, it doesn't start at ninth grade. So, I mean, we know that and we know that there are some fundamental, um, academic gaps that exist. Prior to them getting to us, um. But if we are to do what you just said and make sure that all our students get what. They deserve living in a community like Evanston. I mean, I'm, I'm like heated right now because I, it's because it's a lot of stuff. It's, you know, it's COVID. It's the environment, it's, it's everything. And I'm still trying to figure out how we do better at this, how we do better as a high school. How we do better as a community, like, when will this frustrate everybody in the community? Um, and so that is, that is, and I know people are helping, but there needs to be a collaborative, collective effort. To draw our focus on them. They could be, and I'm on my soapbox now, but they can be as so belonging or feel belonged, like they belong here at ETHS. But leave this safe and comfortable environment and, and totally feel like they're not welcomed in their own community. And we know that exists. And, and that has, that plays into their esteem. It plays into, you know, the expectations we hold for them and that they hold for themselves. And, and somehow we have to figure out how to block out what's happening in the world. In order to protect our boys while we have them, as long as we have them. Because the world is not gonna catch up and we have to figure this out. This is highly frustrating to me.
No, Pete, I'm, I'm wondering, um, I completely agree with what's been said. Um, but I'm wondering if there's a couple of things we can learn from. So one of the things I was thinking about is the, um, redeployment of staff to really be. An old school name, but case managers for kids. And like really paying attention to their work and their assignments and talking to their teachers and all that detail work. Um, I know they're doing it during a totally different learning environment, so that, you know, it's not apples and oranges. But are we learning from that? You know, work, uh, some things that can, we can start to really drill down and, on how to support students. Similarly, if we looked at the, the behavior, um, the goal to student behavior. The number of students who have zero to four behavioral referrals. You know, those numbers look better in general, but if you look at our black men, they went from forty-seven percent in twenty nineteen. To sixty-nine percent in the class of twenty. I'm wondering what, that's a twenty-two percent improvement. And I'm wondering what, what accounts for that? What can we learn from that detail about what worked? That we can start to learn from and apply more broadly with our, with all of our young, um, men of color. So I, I'm, I, I, I don't know that you have answers to either of those two questions right now and, and that's fine. But I, I really think that, like, that statistic really jumped out at me when I was reading this report, um, in a good way. And, and the fact that.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Which one? Can you just repeat that? That went fast.
Sure. So in the, in the report, um, it's actually on page eleven, Gretchen, if you're looking at the actual report.
Got it.
Uh, it's the student behavior chart.
Oh, the behavior one, yeah.
Yeah, so a- again, I'm just, it's not everything, but this is, I, I feel like this is one of our strong suits. Is we drill down and these are some things that I think we can drill down to. This improvement in behavior referrals and what are we learning from having kids have someone really paying attention to them? And I'm sure some of them are, I'm sure they're all different races and genders, but, but I think there's something hopefully there we can learn.
I have some, I have some comments and questions. But I don't know, Pete, did you wanna respond to that?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, the, the first one, well, you know. In terms of the, uh, reaching out to the students and the redeployment of staff, we're still learning from that experience. It's too early to tell. But one of the things that I really appreciate about that is that's something that. You know, as it, as it unfolds and if we determine what works, we use it to collect information and really reach out and connect the kids and really bring them back in. Um, I, I see potentially use for a similar deployment during the school year. Um, I, I think to myself, what would a regular school year look like with in-person instruction? With, with a group of folks who are track, checking in and, and, and supporting kids at that, at that, at that level. And, and I think there's real promise, um, with that. In terms of the discipline data, there's gonna be a full-on discipline report coming your way. And hopefully I could take information gleaned from that and that kind of information and drill down. Um, I think that's also part of the, you know, the, as part of the sense of belonging piece, I think. You know, that goes to, to the discipline piece. I also think it's the, the more we work with our, um. Our staff on, uh, SEL, uh, embedding SEL practices that Jude talked, spoke about earlier. And what we're learning now in the online environment. I think all those things are things we can take away and, and use to improve, uh, this, that's the situation that we see in the data.
Yeah, and, and I'd like to add to that, um, one of the things that, you know, we're learning in, uh, this remote environment. And having staff redeployed to support kids and families is that, um, cause a piece of this is, um, connected to. An effort for, with home visits. Uh, it's something that, you know, it's different when we have our, our support meetings here at the school and that's very formal. But when someone shows up to your home, I think the partnership between the school and family looks and feel very, feels very different. And, uh, that's something that we're looking to learn a lot from while we're in this remote environment. So it seems like a bit of a paradox, but to make home visits turns to town, but it's, it's what's necessary in some cases. And, uh, I think that we're gonna learn a lot from that, um, as we continue to do that, um, this, uh, this semester.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, yes, come here.
It's of like the gap between like black and brown boys. Um, I, I know it's not possible to close that gap within ETHS within the four years that we have it. Because it starts from a very young age. And I don't really know the way that we would do this, but I think looking into investing in District sixty-five schools. And young students before they come here and then implementing support when they get here is important. Because there's no way that you can teach somebody who doesn't know how to read to read within four years. And to catch up when they've lost that much time, which is a lot of the stuff that happens. So, um, I think there just needs to be a partnership more within the whole entire community of Evanston. Not just working within our school because that can't work.
You're absolutely right. What you said makes total sense. And we've been talking about that and trying to, to make sure that we are working with District sixty-five. Because we recognize by the time the students get here, they come here with, um, their skills. And their experience that impacts their approach to school and academics. So all of that is definitely a part of what, what they bring.
So I had a couple, um, comments, probably more than questions. Um, but that, the point, um, that Carmia just made, it relates directly to one of the points that. I was gonna make and I couldn't agree more with the notion that we need to align our work with, uh, District sixty-five. And within the community and, um. I would say that I think we missed an opportunity like both last spring and this fall. By not going ahead with our usual joint school board meeting, um, where we would have an opportunity to come together. With our, our, um, colleagues at districts, on the District sixty-five board and within the District sixty-five administration. To do a check-in on many of these points. And I'm sure we'll get there again eventually. These are pandemic times, so it's, it's certainly tough to do that. But I think we're missing something by not having that conversation. So that we can share the work that we're both doing or trying to do together. Um, and impress upon our community the importance of coming together and working towards a common goal. And, and I would add that this relates to the work of Cradle to Career as well, our collective impact work in Evanston. And I think the pandemic has, um, made that work more difficult too, but we continue to meet. We continue to have conversations, um, around these topics. And I, I think that, um, so my frustration with this report. Is certainly the substance of it, as everybody has noted. It, it feels like, well, it doesn't just feel like it, there really is a lack of progress. And in, and in some ways, there's, um, even, even worse results. Um, but what struck me, I, I just pulled up the report on student achievement from last year. Because I wanted a point of comparison and what frustrates me about this report every year is that it gets delivered in isolation. And we don't have a point of comparison for previous years that's made easy for us to see and understand and relate to. Or for our community to see and understand and relate to. So I did go back on our fancy board book setup and pulled up, um, that colorful bar chart. About whether our students have met one, two, three, or four of the college readiness benchmarks. And I just did the math, which is never my strong suit. I do not even begin to compare to, um, Steve Kornacki on election night, who does all that math in his head on the vote counts. Like on the spot, I can't do that. But it was easy enough for me to do the math on our, all of our students, which is the first bar across the page. On whether all students meet one, two, three, or four of our college readiness benchmarks. And we reported that differently last year. We reported last year on one, two, three, four. And this year we combined it into three or four and one or two. Um, but when you add all that up together, we have exactly the same result. This year we had sixty-two percent with three or four. And if you go back to twenty nineteen, we had sixty-two percent of all students with three, meeting three or four. This year we had twenty-four percent of students getting one or two. Last year we had twenty-four percent doing one or two. And fourteen percent each year get meeting none of the college readiness benchmarks. And then if we dive a little deeper and we go to African-American, um, and black males. It's remarkably similar and arguably, well, it is worse, I think. Um, in the first category, three or four, we're at twenty-four this year, but we were at twenty-seven in twenty nineteen. One or two, we were, we're at forty-four this year. It was forty-six in twenty nineteen. And this year, uh, black African-American males, um, meeting none of those benchmarks. Is thirty-two percent and it was twenty-seven percent in twenty nineteen. So that's, that's really, um. Really, it's very upsetting. Um, and it's, you know, and I don't have to read the numbers, but I think it's important to look at these numbers year to year. And to understand how they relate to one another. And I, I, I really, I, I've said this before in different ways, but I wish we could figure out. A better way to report out on this data in a way that's digestible and easy to, to follow from year to year. And I think we need a, a dashboard, um, where we can convey this information to our community and get our heads around it. And I think we need to, um, get back to, um, for example. Our joint District sixty-five two oh two literacy goal, which, you know, was a twelve-year goal. It still exists. It's something that we are meant to discuss at our joint school board meetings, which we haven't had for quite a long time. And, um, it's an opportunity for us to look deeply at this issue year over year over year. And try and get to the bottom of, of what we're missing and, and what needs to be done here. And instead, we're in a holding pattern, um, I would say worse than a holding pattern because we're kind of going backwards. This is, this is tough times, so I'm, you know, I'm, I'm mindful of that. And, um, but because it's tough times, I think it's even more important that we. Stick with these goals and stick with this focus and multitask around it. Because we can't just put it aside and say, we're gonna wait till the pandemic is over to tackle it. And it, it's frustrating. And then lastly, I'm just gonna end with a question, uh, to Pete. Um, to try and be a little more specific and wrap this up. The, um, whatever happened to, um, our work with Northwestern? To develop ETHS-specific benchmarks? Because we're now, you know, I know that we always look at the college readiness benchmarks from Illinois ESU. But we had spent literally years working with Northwestern to develop something specific to ETHS. Um, can you just, I, I, I'm not looking, I, I'm not asking you to do an off-the-cuff full report on that. But just, wh- what happened? Did they just fall into the black hole that is the pandemic where everything else is going?
Um, Carrie actually has an update on NIRA, can provide that. But the measures that initially they provided us of which we could report on are essentially, um. They were, uh, that, what they settled on were on-track indicators for college readiness based on, uh, ninth grade. Where students were in ninth grade was what, was what we, what they, uh, came up with. And Carrie, do you, uh, know where they are with that project right now? I know last we met, they were talking about, they had attendance thresholds, uh, core, essentially, we looked at it. And if we put that in this report, we would, um, it wouldn't be sufficient because it didn't track juniors and seniors. And only tracked freshmen at that time. So what we asked for was a more, a broader application of that measure, if that remembering correctly.
They ended with like college readiness, uh, ninth grade and then in eighth grade. And it was not something that was usable, actionable. something that was usable, actionable, quick um turnaround. So um, kind of took a step back and they're looking at that transition from eighth to to high school, sort of a a high school. We're not really calling it high school readiness, but that's where they're looking at their sort of um rethinking the data and now they're looking at eighth grade, ninth grade.
So what was wrong, what was wrong with their, you you said it wasn't, it wasn't what? It wasn't something, but what wasn't it?
It was the, it was looking at so ninth grade predicting, you know, college um readiness with the five consecutive, you know, semesters of, you know, likelihood of completing five consecutive semesters. And what they ended with, we just said ninth grade. It was only ninth grade, so it wasn't even taking account what happens in tenth, eleventh, and twelfth. It hadn't gotten to that point yet. And it was, I mean, across the board, a lot of measures we look at attendance and um, you know, having honors level courses, et cetera. I'd have to go look at all of the the model itself they ended up with, but it was um not clunky, but it it was a really, because now that again was really only narrowly focused at ninth grade. So after conversation and thinking about it, we they just sort of stepped back and did a eighth to ninth, they're working on eighth to ninth grade and stuff.
I think though, to that question though, uh Gretchen, I think that we could bring, we 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 always do a a NIRA update uh at some point and we could, we could do that because I think that would be.
Yeah, I just, you know, I I think that usually happens at our joint school board meeting. We didn't have one in the spring. We didn't have one in the fall. So I maybe there's another way to figure out how to do that just before our regular board meetings. So that we could, you know, I I feel like it it's a little bit of a um you know, we just keep putting it off or and, you know, we're optimistic about developing some new measurement system, but but, you know, instead we end up with nothing. Um, and we need, well, I guess nothing, not, it's not nothing. We have the ESSA, Illinois ESSA college readiness benchmarks.
You know, and I, and I think this is definitely a time, it's an opportunity, as frustrating as I am and we all are, there's an opportunity here. Um. Yeah, we, no one was in a position to meet in the spring. And um, I'm not even sure Dr. Horton has been here ninety days yet. I I don't know. Um, probably feels like ninety years to him. Um, but so now we have um leadership at sixty five that I believe has a a, you know, of course he has a different vision. Um, and I'm also looking forward to um a different literacy goal. I mean, I, you know, the the, I'm not sure if that one. Um, well, there's an opportunity. There's an opportunity to look at it again. There's an opportunity to determine if it's um, fits the current vision of District sixty five and if it will help us do what we need to do. So, you know, we have to keep figuring this out and we have to um keep lighting a fire under it. And so I'm desperately looking forward to what um our conversations will be going for with District sixty five, but the community as well. I mean, I, you know, District sixty five is struggling. The kids at District sixty five are struggling. And so i- it won't work with just us. And I guess that's the point I'm trying to make. So there has to be some collective effort that also supports this literacy goal that's um that sixty five and two oh two is in alignment with, but there's a wider reach into how we can support our students. Um, that goes deeper beyond the school districts. So.
For sure.
Yeah. Yeah.
Wanted to add, um, this is really just a comment. It's just, I wonder, um, the numbers are predictable. We've talked about multiple factors that um are likely contributing to these low achievement numbers. We're talking about the community, talked about joint literacy goals, talked about sense of belonging, social emotional learning. And just in my mind, another factor, and i- it's it's no disrespect to, I think, we have a an extremely talented staff, um, but sometimes you have to take a look at what you're doing. Um, and maybe change things up because what it makes me think of when you have such an alarming failure rate, especially coming from two particular groups that the black and Latinx males, that's, they're alarming. So I'm thinking on the ground level, how are the teams working in problem solving? And to me, that goes along with a mindset shift. Because, I mean, is it alarming to, I mean, students earn grades. I understand that. But, you know, teachers teach and they meet their students where they are and for it, the numbers to be consistently what they are and in some cases getting worse. Um, we talk about a lot of factors. But I just think that it needs to be put out there. There, you know, how about the mindset of those who are educating these children? And I, as I said, no disrespect, and I think we we we, we all know that we have an extremely talented staff that cares. Um, but what is going on in those teams? Are they getting granular? Are they looking at individuals who need shortened data cycles like, you know, we need to check in on this, on this kid and not let and, you know, not let an F exist for weeks on end without some type of intervention. Um, so I don't know because um, we're at policy level and I'm not involved in the daily operation of schools, but I do know schools. Um, I've worked on teams. I've worked on teams devising interventions for certain students. And not all of them are gonna need the same intervention. Um, but i- it just really makes me think of mindset. Like, is it okay? And we, I mean, w- we know which teachers are failing have the the highest percentage of failure rates for Latinx and black males. Maybe they need more support. Maybe they need support in 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 changing their practice. Um, it is, it's just, I'm very frustrated. Um. Yes, I I just think that we need to look at mindset set and look at look at this grand in a granular way, like what is going on in these teams when they get together and and discuss these students individually, they're individuals, each with a story. You know, um, we can have a great joint literacy goal. We can have buy in from everybody in the town. But when, when that door closes in that classroom or now virtually, what is going on? What is, what is the, you know, are people being held accountable for excessive failure rates for black and Latino males? That's what, that's, this is what goes through my mind.
I'd just like to follow up on those comments. I mean, Jude, I wholeheartedly agree. And I mean, I I feel like we have to treat this like a crisis, you know, if this was a budget. If this, if we were falling off our budget next year because of whatever happens with COVID, we'd figure out a way. We'd figure out every way till Tuesday to work through that. And, you know, likewise, if this was a falling off or if if white male students started showing these rates of decline, we'd be getting to the bottom of that lickety split and um and figuring out every way to Tuesday to resolve those issues. And it's not, it's not to um it's not to say that well, maybe it is to say, you know, where are we putting our priorities and how are we, are we treating this as the crisis that it is? Because I remember, I haven't been on the board that long, but I, you know, I know this has been an ongoing issue and it's the same story every year. And every year more students go through and come out the other end in whatever shape. You know, they're coming out, but we know that along racial lines, the black and Latinx students are faring much worse at the other end of this. And it's not acceptable. It's just not acceptable. And we wouldn't accept it for the dominant, you know, white male and female students or the Asian students or, you know, I mean, if the, if there was these kinds of, if we suddenly saw this kind of decline in performance and in achievement in those groups, it would be absolutely unacceptable. And the fact that we can, you know, go another year before we hear this same story again is frankly offensive to me. You know, we have to treat this like it's a, the problem that it is. And, you know, it it's, I, it's a combination of all the things that have been raised tonight. We know that. It's what happens when the door closes. It's how much resources are allocated, how much checking that we're doing and, you know, what's going on in the community. But maybe we really need to start thinking creatively beyond the channels that we've been operating in every year up to this point and start thinking literally outside the box. And how do we engage our community? I feel responsible reporting back to our community that we're just learning the same story again this year, that we didn't do the joint board meetings, that we're not working more diligently with District sixty five despite the fact that they have new leadership, you know, working. I I just see time ticking away and this continuing unless we actually treat it like the crisis that it is. And how in a crisis does a community come together and solve a problem that we're all invested in solving? So I'm with you, Jude. I'm with all of you on this. I know, I know it's upsetting to all of us. And this is not, no single um cause is responsible for this. There's, it's a, it's a multifaceted issue, but I can tell you that looking at it through an equity lens, there is a catalyzing factor. If this was affecting a particular group of students, you know, and those being the white students, we would not, our community would not stand for that. Our community would say, there is a serious problem. Well, there is a serious problem. And we know who it's affecting and it's, it's just not, it's not acceptable. And we can't continue to have the same conversation and the same questions year after year.
I feel like we come to this point whenever we look at achievement. When we disaggregate by race, we are, we we are here. This is where we are. This is where we've come. And it is a really difficult and complex problem and issue. We know that. And we have to stay in our place of discomfort and continue the work that we're doing. It's really not easy. There's no simple. There's no, there's no one meeting that we can have. And this would be, it would be solved. And, you know, I just want to remind everybody, we are in the midst of a pandemic and we've, we've turned our whole way of functioning and operating completely changed, everything, as did District sixty five, as did the rest of our community. So it's, it's not as if we're not doing anything here. We do have to do more. There is yet another opportunity. And as we talk about what pieces of our new way of functioning are gonna stick and stay, we've got to keep this, we've got to keep this at the forefront. What, what other, what are we doing? And what can we continue to do when we're on the other side of this? Um, how can, what can, what changes can we make? Yes, I do think we should look at, at how we're functioning. We should look at that goal. We should make sure that that's what we want to do. We should look at, at, at the benchmarks and 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 make sure that they are relevant to what we, what we're doing here in the high school. That's what we're doing. Other comments? Right, I'm gonna move us along here. We are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
Take care, everyone.
Thank you. Take care of yourself. Thanks for coming out. Okay, so we're at comments from the public. Public comments are submitted in writing prior to the meeting. Uh, Dr. Beavis, do we have any public comments?
No comments were submitted for this evening's meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, item number eight is for you. We have one for you in the packet.
Uh, yes, we have a FOIA from ESPY and the response is in your packet.
Okay, thank you. All right, board committee reports. Do we have any? I know there's some meetings coming up.
You know, I just, um, very briefly, I'm gonna send it around because I'm gonna get it tomorrow, but the EdRed member meeting was Friday. Um, and Ralph Martiri from the Illinois um Center for Tax and Budget Accountability. Um, many of you may already be familiar with Ralph Martiri. He's been around for a long time. Um, he was a proponent, his organization and himself were a proponent of the fair tax um referendum that was on the ballot and failed rather hugely. Um, if I can say that, with um big implications for well, our entire state, um, but education in particular. Um, and he laid out how that might look going forward. Um, and I will share with all of you his PowerPoint, which hopefully I'm gonna have in my hands tomorrow. And then I'll send it around and you can all look at it in your, at your leisure. As you may know, if you've seen one of Ralph's presentations before, he has a really, really uh detailed PowerPoints and charts that sort of lay everything out. And so some of what he talks about is the bad financial situation of our state going into this election. Um, and then he extends the bad situation going forward and gives us a clear picture. And also he talked about, um, you know, options both for revenue raising and um cuts in spending going forward, which could implicate, well, it it pretty unquestionably will implicate education and evidence-based funding in particular. So yeah, there was nothing good about, about it, really.
And I have a discipline committee meeting coming up in the next couple of weeks, but I would like to um just share that I took part in the peer conference training on October nineteenth. I, I wish getting towards a better space and place with our black and brown males were as easy as we've all just talked about. Um, and we didn't, we're not saying it's easy, but I just want to say that before I say how impactful this conference was for me to participate alongside ETHS staff and faculty members, um, students um, that are doing the hard work. Those numbers, those graphs, everything we're looking at, all these ideas, all these, you know, all the different issues. It, it is not that easy, easy and, and it, and you know, it's just not that easy to resolve. And they are really on the front line trying to figure out how to, um, build better relationships, how to make a shift in those relationships, how to do things differently. Um, I met this counselor and I forget his name. I think it wrote, I wrote it down, but it doesn't matter. Um, I was just impressed by this young man's story. And to know that he was a student that I see almost every given day, someone who struggled through high school. Um, and finally made it through. Someone supported him through college and he is a counselor for us. And so he is someone that our children can see and see themselves in. And what he said to me was when he first started looking for a counseling position, he was afraid to tell his story of struggle. And he said that he was so thankful that there was a place like ETHS that saw that struggle as being meaningful and important for the students that we serve. So that's the kind of stuff that needs to happen. It's so much more deeper than equity. It is so much more profound and partnership and collaboration with another school. It is making sure that we do, we create the work on the front line where our students can feel like they're missed when they don't come or feel like there's a person that shares the same pathway or passage that they have been experiencing in life. And, I mean, I would just say if it, it, that sort of leveled me as a board member, it humbles you when you are in the same company of the people doing the work. Cause if we continue to kind of stay up here and think that all we can do and all we should do is think about it up here, we forget the hard work that's going on and none of this is easy. None of this, and I'm not, one thinks it is, but it's so, it, you know, even in my frustration, it's easier for me to say what should happen and what shouldn't happen. And strategically, I think that way because I'm a CEO, but as a person that's in operations, everything that I think sounds right doesn't work out right. And so they are doing this work and, um, and they're trying to be better. That's the thing that I want to just lift up. Um, and it's, and, you know, so if ever you have an opportunity, I would encourage you. It might take some time out of your day, um, to do this work, but it will definitely put you back in your lane as a school board member and as an advocate and also help you appreciate a little bit more what it takes to come in and do this day in and day out with teenagers and their parents. So I, you know, I just want to shout out to the discipline committee because I am their, their, you know, probably their biggest thorn. But I really appreciated being a part of this process and will continue to support them any way that I can.
Thank you Monique and thank you for that. And thank you for sharing and bringing us back to the reality of how difficult and hard this is. And keeping that in front of us. This is hard. These are real people. These are real students with lives and experiences and each story matters. Each story has been impacted, each of those, each of those students. And you're right. So thank you. Thank you for being a part of that very important committee. All right. We are. Any more reports? I don't want to move too quickly. Uh, with student board report, Carmia.
Um, okay, so I, the student union also recently did a survey for students about how e-learning has gone, um, and just how that's been and how the homework load and I.
Carmia, your mic is really low.
Can you hear me better now? Give me one second. Hold on, I'm gonna, is it, how bad is it if I'm?
That's better.
That is much better, yes.
Um, so I shared, um, or Mr. Pond shared, uh, the PDF, but if, am I allowed to share my screen on here? Does anyone know?
I think we all can. You, you don't see the share screen at the bottom?
No, I do. I just wanted to make sure, um, I could do that. Let me pull this up. Okay, can everyone see this? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, this was more of like direct student feedback on like specific homework hours and stuff. And, um, we got demographics, demographics as well, and there was a skew of, um, eleventh graders, so juniors, um, more than everybody else. And so that might've just been from what teachers sent this to their students or just who really took this, but that happened and also it's disproportionately white, which we already know is um, also the statistics of our school as well, but the statistics here are also a little bit skewed and the percentage is over a hundred because we didn't, um, instead of having like in bi-racial, one for people, people could also click more than one race. And so that caused like an over percentage to happen there, but we already know that it's, this is basically the demographics of our school as well. And then also it was, um, more female than anybody else represented. And so I don't know why that would, that is as well, but that is also what you're looking at when we look at the data here. It's been shared with everybody and I'm not gonna go all the way through it just because those are things that everyone can look at on their own. But, um, so there's data which is within here that you can look at, um, separately. But the go-to was just the recommendations and like what came out of that and what we saw from students. Um, so juniors and seniors are getting a lot more work than they feel that they should and they have like, um, a lot of workload in terms of like AP classes. And I know that there's a lot of curriculum that they have to get through and a lot of stuff. But there's just, people are feeling way too overwhelmed with work. Um, and we said that we recommend that three to four hours of homework total per week for all classes. Um, and this is just a recommendation. Um, also for asynchronous Mondays, it was a lot of students reported wanting to use that as a catch-up day. A lot of students are getting a lot of work on those days, like excessive work when they need more time to finish all the work that they've been given the week before or to just start up on something. I guess it's been more of a just throw a bunch of work at students day instead of letting them catch up on what they've already had. Um, pronouns is a big thing. It's an equity issue. Um, a lot of people who identify as non-binary or have pronouns that you might not or have pronouns that you may not assume. They want to put their pronouns up there, but if everyone else isn't doing that, then it feels like you're the only one or it feels like you're singled out. So that is an important issue. Um, if everyone could just put up their pronouns, it would eliminate people from feeling, um, singled out or different in that. Um, screens, so I know screens is a big, it's uh, thing that's talked about just because teachers, um, you do want to be able to teach to actual students, but, um, we believe that it's also an equity issue. Um, just because some students may have a environment where they feel they can show it and they feel comfortable showing their room or wherever they are. And other students may have an environment where a lot of people are in, at once in their house. And so, and maybe they don't even, maybe they're in an apartment or wherever they are. Um, some students may not feel comfortable showing the environment that they're in. Um, and not everyone's able to do virtual backgrounds just because not all Chromebooks are updated that way. And so you just can't ask people to, you know, you're asking to be in somebody's home and someone's life and some people don't feel comfortable um, or embarrassed and you wouldn't want to force them to do that. Um, uh, some teachers are lecturing a lot and are doing fewer interactive activities. And that kind of limits the learning of some students is what they says, like I can't learn if I'm, I can't stare at a screen for seventy minutes. And I don't think that should be happening, um, where students are just sitting there and, um, hearing a teacher lecture for seventy minutes. I don't, I wouldn't learn that way. And, um, a lot of students feel the same way as well. Breaks is a big thing as well. Um, just incorporating breaks into class. It's the same as any other class and especially while we're doing school on a computer and homework on a computer. You just have a lot of screen time. It gives you a big headache and I'm sure teachers feel the same way as well. So it's, it would be best for everybody just to take small, just a minute break, two-minute breaks, do a stretch. I know the teachers that do that in my classes. I feel great after and I feel like a brain break and it's been really a positive thing with me. Um, another thing students complained about, um, because of, a lot of these were in, uh, we gave a section for students to just write what they feel about e-learning. So a lot of this is just coming from the accumulated um, data there with a lot of what students have said and the trends in that. Um, but students wanted more consistent due dates because some people just have odd deadlines or whatever for stuff. And it's like, I don't know, some people will have a due date on maybe like a Sunday night or a Sunday morning, just weird due dates where you have a lot of stuff going on and it's just, isn't the best time to have an assignment due and it's easy to forget, which then it's easier to fall behind. Um, and this is just specifically for seniors. I know that a lot of college application deadlines are coming up. And, um, this past week is something that we can't change, but, um, November first was a deadline for um, a lot of early action, early decision, college applications. And I know a lot of students reported, um, at least within our last student union meeting of having a lot of work on those weekends when they were trying to finish up those applications, which is like we're going into a new part of our life. So it's important to do well on that and to have a lot of work is just not helpful. And then stresses, um, just racially, socially, the election, the upcoming senate decision. I don't know too much about that, which I probably should because I'm voting. Um, but there's just a lot going on in the world. It was just so much unrest. There's a lot of emotions. We're in the middle of a pandemic and I know everyone knows this, but just being mindful of that. Cause I feel like some teachers, they are so worried about getting their curriculum through and that, that it's going over students and how they're feeling and that, that should never be the case, in my opinion. It should not be the case that we're more worried about school and, and getting this lesson done than a student who is emotionally in distress. Um, the last thing that, um, is a recommendation is just not giving large tests, which goes into, um, what I've been saying before, but not giving large test assignments or projects after a holiday, a long weekend or a break. Um, it's, you just have to give a second for people to get back into school. Um, you know, I know after this election that happened a lot, the day after, which everyone, we had no idea what was gonna go on the day after, but a lot of students were getting like exams or projects that were due the day after the election. And I don't know how you could possibly focus or do well on something after, um, a big historical event like that. So that, those were, the findings are all in this PDF, but the recommendations is just what I wanted to say because this is direct student feedback, um, on just working, how they've been feeling. And so, yes, that is all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, and, uh, Dr. Witherspoon Superintendent's report. You're muted, Dr. Witherspoon.
I'll start over. Hi, everybody. Um, Carmia, uh, thank you for that. You did share us with us the PDF. And we will make sure that the student feedback, uh, gets in the hands of the department chairs, the teachers. Uh, because, but clearly, just like the other surveys we looked at tonight, uh, when it can, when, when the feedback can be digested by the people who are really working with this every day, uh, it clearly is an opportunity to make adjustments and, and, and make improvements. So thank you very much. Very, a lot of work obviously went into that. And congrats to the, you and the student union. Really appreciate it. Um, uh, real quickly, uh, we did last week have incoming freshman information night. It was virtual. And, uh, it was a smashing success. Uh, I'd encourage you to ask any family of incoming freshmen in the class of twenty twenty-five, uh, what they thought because we've been getting unbelievable feedback on that. And it was just great to, uh, to welcome them, uh, to our, to our ETHS and Wildkill family. Uh, I do want to, uh, lift up that, uh, we had the, uh, the annual Guild Brew Arsenal Spirit Awards for support staff. Uh, this is a, uh, a, a real honor for, for, uh, uh, support staff members who received this. It's a, it's only given out annually. And this year, a big congratulations to Evelyn Chapman, uh, in our special ed department, Veronica McKinney in our main office and Emily Sosa in the fine arts department. They were honored by their peers and by all of us. And, uh, it, it was just a very special event. Again, virtual and, uh, and we had a huge, uh, uh, turnout for that. Uh, and also congratulations to Mark Vandreisik, uh, chem phys teacher. Actually, our physics teacher specifically, uh, because he was, uh, recently received a University of Chicago Outstanding Educator Award nominated by one of his former students. So, uh, you know, not the first time that Marcus won an award like this, but, uh, Dr. Vandreisik, uh, certainly has an impact on many students. A quick reminder about the family talk series. The next one coming up, uh, well, it is a virtual event. It's, uh, this coming, uh, I'm sorry, not this coming. Uh, it's next Wednesday, November the eighteenth, uh, in the evening at six thirty PM. Uh, we've been having quite a few families attendees. Uh, this, uh, when the topic is supporting grieving teens during COVID nineteen and beyond. A little bit about the, the pandemic and the issues that Carmia was just talking about. In fact, uh, it's on our website. You can check the calendar and, and how to, uh, attend and participate in that. Uh, reminder that we do recognize and honor Veterans Day. It's this Wednesday, November eleventh. There will be no school. Uh, and then as we get into the week of Thanksgiving, um, uh, we will be having two, uh, learning planning days on the Monday and Tuesday. Uh, these are remote planning days that are provided by the state. Uh, and, and as a result, that will combine with our, um, already planned fa- fall break around Thanksgiving. Uh, so there will be no classes for students that week. Um, you know, sometimes you have to repeat messages a lot of times for people, uh, to, uh, you know, really hear the message. But I think with our students mentioning one time that there will be no classes the week of Thanksgiving, uh, is about all it takes. They're already highly aware of that. And that concludes my report.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Witherspoon. All right, so we are, um, at our finance committee, uh, report. And I am now officially convening the twenty twenty levy public hearing. This public hearing is being held due to the district's intent to adopt and aggregate levy. and aggregate levy 2.99% in excess of the 2019 levy. Ms. Rodino, did you publish notice of this hearing?
Yes, we did on October 30th, 2020.
Thank you. The proposed levy will provide funds to support the usual expenses of Evanston Township High School. An amount in excess of a 2.99% overall increase is to be levied to ensure that our extension base increases by the tax cap CPI of 2.3% plus any new property.
I don't believe anyone submitted any desire to present testimony.
Thank you. So Ms. Rodino, do you have any additional comments?
I do have a few slides for you and then we can take any board questions at that time during those slides or afterwards. I'm going to share my screen. I promise this won't be too long. Okay, you all can see that, right?
Yes.
Okay, great. So thank you again, Madam President. This is the 2020 tax levy hearing. The board will be actually passing this item at the next board meeting in December. So like I said, I just have a few slides. The first one is with some of the important dates. As I mentioned, on October 30th, we did publish the legal notice. Tonight, we're doing the public hearing, which is called Truth in Taxation for the 2020 Tax Levy. At the December board meeting, which is the 14th, the levy will be adopted. And then I'm not really sure what that's going to look like this year. Normally I make an annual trek down to the Cook County offices. But we, we will be filing that levy either in person or remotely by December 29th, which I believe is the last Tuesday in December. So there are a lot of technical terms. I'm not going to read this entire slide. I know it's been a long meeting, but I, I do want to give you the high points. There are two parts to the levy. One is kind of the normal operating levy or corporate levy. And then the debt service portion. The debt service portion is always levied by the county for the exact amount that's needed to service our debt, which as you all know is capped in Cook County. So that's an automatic levy based on what our obligations are. And then the rest of the levy, the increase is really determined by the Consumer Price Index. We'll get into a little bit more about that in a later slide. Sorry about that. And then there are items called special purpose levies, but they're, they're also part of the overall levy itself. So based on when our fiscal year starts and ends, our budget consists of two different levies or two different levy amounts. The first is the second half or largest portion, which is 55% of the previous year's levy. The second is the spring, which is the first half of next year's levy. So two levy revenue numbers exist in our budget book every year. We started to simplify it and we just call it spring and tax rather than calculating which year's levy it's based on. So you do see spring, sorry, spring and fall in our budget book for the levies. We are subject to tax caps, which limits the amount of our taxation. And it's an amount that's based on the prior year and the increase is the lesser of the prior year CPI, which is determined every December for 5%. In, in my time definitely at ETHS, I have not seen anything close to 5%. So that, that would have been many, many years ago. Our 2020 levy cap rate is 2.3%, which is based on the CPI that was determined last December. It's a blended rate. So the previous one was 1.9. So if you add those together and, and average them, it's a 2.1% average. And that's what our increase is limited to. The reason that we publish a levy increase of 2.99 or request a levy increase, it's actually 3% when you include that debt service piece. It, it is a way to make sure that we capture everything that's allowable by law from that 2.3% CPI increase. But it also is the way that we collect taxes on any new property. And Evanston's been fortunate to have some new property. We always want to make sure that we capture those new buildings that are going up. So that's why the levy amount is actually a little bit higher than we'll probably actually see. This also incorporates expiring TIFs, which we don't have any this year. So when all the levies are added in, this does not include the debt service. It's just over 75.1 million, almost 75.2 million, which again is subject to those caps from, with an increase from last year's tax. And then the debt service piece is just under 3 million. So on an average home in Evanston valued at approximately $400,000, our, our portion of the increase would amount to about $6,500. So 2019 was a reassessment year in Evanston. Many of you probably noticed that those assessments went up pretty high. I, I'm not sure exactly where this falls now. But I had heard some discussion, it was probably spring, summer, that there may be some reassessment of all property. I think it was primarily due to some high assessments on commercial property. But, but that could be a possibility. It really, for us, it just kind of shifts how the pie is made up because for us, it's really a pie. So we're still capped at that CPI increase, no matter what happens with the reassessment. Values in our area have really increased in, in the past couple of reassessments. We do know that. But it is important, as I said, to remember that we do levy for a dollar amount, which, which we are subject to those, you know, relatively low increases. We don't have the taxing ability, for example, that the city of Evanston would or a home rule entity where they can decide really what that increase is and, and raise taxes higher than the CPI if they want to. We don't have that ability. Just a reminder, we had the Washington National TIF closed a couple of years ago. We don't have any major TIFs closing anytime soon in Evanston. There are still, I can't remember, I think five active TIFs in Evanston. It's five or six. Our Joint Review Board, which is all the taxing districts, the city, the schools, Oakden, some of the other taxing bodies meet every year. Typically, it's in November. This year it will be December. So I'll be going to that meeting, well, I was going to say at the city, but everything's virtual on December 10th. So we have that coming up. So that's it. Just wanted to kind of give you the, the basics of our tax levy. There's really no surprise, nothing out of the ordinary. Like I said, no major TIFs or anything going on right now. So you know, the, the only thing I guess I would just say, looking forward is of course, depending on how things shake out with the Consumer Price Index this year, which we'll find out sometime next month, that will determine how things look for us with any increase for next year. Okay, that's my, that's everything I have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Always a very clear presentation. Mary, thank you so much.
You're welcome. I tried to keep it short.
Is there any further testimony? Hearing no further testimony, I now declare this hearing closed. Thank you again, Mary. All right. We are at action items. The first action item is approval of the LGBTQ plus month resolution. And I believe Gretchen, you're going to read that for us?
First have to unmute myself. So I'm reading this in November, even though Pride Month is actually June. LGBTQ plus history month was last month. So we're just doing a little catch up here. And then we'll get this regularly on our calendar.
Yes, we will.
Every year. Our resolution is titled LGBTQ month resolution. Whereas the struggle for acceptance, simple human dignity and equality under the law for LGBTQ plus people is evidenced by the dedicated advocates and allies who endeavor to create a more inclusive society. And whereas June 2020 commemorated the 50th anniversary of the first pride parade, which came one year after the Stonewall uprising, six nights of riots sparked when LGBTQ plus people led by transgender women of color like Marsha P. Johnson and Sylvia Rivera resisted police harassment and brutality during an early morning bar raid. This historic moment served as a catalyst for the LGBTQ plus rights movement in the United States and around the world. And whereas the decades since have been one of struggle and celebration for the LGBTQ plus community, despite increased support and acceptance, LGBTQ plus young people still face many challenges. And whereas the Evanston Township High School District 202 Board recognizes the urgency of its charge to foster a responsive, caring and inclusive culture where all feel valued, supported and hopeful. The Evanston Township High School Board appreciates the many contributions made by LGBTQ plus students, educators, staff and families to the vibrancy of the broader school community. Evanston Township High School District 202 has a richly diverse LGBTQ plus community that includes people from all walks of life who should be able to live without fear of prejudice, discrimination or violence. Now therefore be it resolved that the Evanston Township High School District 202 Board, on behalf of the students, educators and families of Evanston Township High School, does hereby proclaim that June 2020 was LGBTQ plus pride month in Evanston Township High School and urges all to respect and honor our diverse community and to build a culture of inclusivity and equity, not only during LGBTQ plus pride month, but during the other 11 months of the year as well.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
You're muted, Kathy.
Kathy, you're muted.
I'll get this eventually. Who made the motion, please, and who seconded it? Pat?
Monsell. Make motion. Monique, second.
Thank you. Okay. All right, Laude?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yes.
Teterich?
She's having connection problems. So she had the...
Did she nod her head or?
Yeah, she is currently having connection problems.
She's not, she's not here.
She's not here right now.
All right, Savage Williams?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That motion passed. All right, the next item is approval of resolution for supplementary debt services, our service levy.
Oh, I just, I thought someone was going to discuss it. No?
No. We're going right to the motion in the second.
That speeds things up. That's good. Okay, and who moved it first? I, you know, I'm new at this.
Pat Monsell made the motion. Do we get a second?
I can second it.
Gretchen, second.
Thank you.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Laude?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yeah.
Is Teterich back?
No, she's not back yet.
Savage Williams?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. The next item is approval of the school report card.
So moved.
Who said that?
Monique.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, Liz, all right.
Can I just ask a question on this one before the vote? Sorry Kathy to throw you off there. Tell me again why it is that we, that we have to, we have to approve this report card? When it's, when it's frankly so particularly unhelpful, given the lack of information contained within it this year?
Especially this year.
Yeah, it, it stayed law. By law, we, we have to present it in public to the board and the board has to vote approval.
Okay, thank you, Eric. I think I ask the same question every year, but I appreciate it.
I, I think, I think we probably said...
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, Laude?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yeah.
Teterich is in there. Savage Williams?
Yes, thank you. Next item is approval of resolution authorizing commencement of vaping litigation.
Wow, this was news to me. Someone moving it?
So I'll move.
Monique moved.
I can second it.
Pat Monsell, second.
Thank you. Laude?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yeah.
Teterich, no. Savage Williams?
Yes.
How much money do we spend on dealing with this?
Kathy, the meeting is late most of the time. Sorry.
Okay, the next item is the consent agenda, which, which consists of approval of minutes from October 12th, 2020 closed session meeting, October 12th, 2020 regular meeting, treasurer's report from September 2020, approval of bills, personnel agenda, appointments to staff, safety, change in status, stipends, leaves of absence, maternity, paternity, certify, support staff and engineer, resignation, certify, support staff, retirement, support staff, nutrition services, memorandum of understanding, support staff and settlement agreement, support staff.
I move that we pass the consent agenda.
Second.
So Gretchen made the motion.
I know. And then, well, I'll give it to Pat this time. All right, Laude?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yeah.
Savage Williams?
Yes, and Teterich is back.
Oh, so how did she vote on this one?
Yes, sorry. My apologies for my connection.
No, that's fine. I didn't see you in the, you know.
Not sure who's letting me in every time I ask. I've been dropped many times, so.
Okay, the, the next item for approval is personnel addendum, appointments to staff, support staff, stipends and memorandum of understanding from the teachers' council.
So moved.
Wait a minute, I've lost a piece of paper. Okay, and that was in, what was the topic? I'm very sorry.
Personnel addendum. Monique?
Okay.
Monique made the motion and Liz, did you second it? Oh, Pat Monsell.
With Liz, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, Laude?
Yes.
Thank you. Livingston?
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yeah.
Teterich?
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes, I see. That actually was part of the consent agenda. That was the confusion. Sorry about that.
You want it separate or does it come under consent?
It does. It should have come under the consent agenda. I just, I stopped reading and I should have continued to read it.
Thank you. I just need to do things correctly.
Okay, so we are at old and new business. Does anybody have any old or new business to present? You sure, Gretchen? All right. So we are at a closing. Can I have a motion for adjournment, please?
Adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned at 10 o'clock. Hey. We almost got before 10. Thank you all very much.
That's what I was aiming for.